Good evening. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of March 8, 2022. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to their republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you all. This is the first meeting of the month. And so with all first meetings, we start with the supervisor's report. But for the folks at home, let you know what we'll be discussing tonight. We'll have that report, the clerk's report, a very brief meeting will just have some highlights of the 2021 financial update report. And we also have a resolution to set a public hearing on the water district rates. And we have one individual to consider for appointment in one of our committees. Okay. And do we have the screen share working? Is the screen share up there? There we are. Okay. For the supervisors' report. This is a statement, a snapshot of the finances of the town. At any given moment, in this case, it's the period ending February 28, 2022. And we start with a beginning balance of 7,347,235. We had our seats of 328,000. We had dispersments of 532,000, leaving a remaining balance of 7,143,754. You have a few budget adjustments now that we are closing out the books for 2021, making final adjustments there. And also you have your variance reports. That's for this period, February. Are there any questions about either one, the supervisor's report for the budget adjustments? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept the supervisor's report and to pass the budget adjustments. Who would like to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Christine. Is there a second?
Seconded.
You, Bill Hamel, all in favor? Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Myself. Thank you very much. We also have the clerk's report. Deanna, if you'd be kind enough to give that.
The town clerk's report for the period of February 1st to February 28, 2022. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor of $3,779.66. Amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for spay neuter program, $31. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $45. Total state county and local revenues, $3,888. And vouchers, I certify vouchers number 28659 to 28765. Processed in the month of January 22. And vouchers 28772 and 28880 in the month of February 22 are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board.
Very good. Thank you very much, Deanna. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report, please?
So moved.
Go second.
Second.
All in favor, Jacob?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And myself. Thank you very much. Thank you, Deanna. Okay, announcements before we get to the report, just two announcements. The VFW would like you to be aware that they are having a couple of events on the next two Sundays. Sunday, March 13th, it's their St. Patty's Day Corn Beef and Cabbage Dinner from 4:00 to 7:00 o'clock. And the following weekend, they are having a pancake breakfast from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. So that's the 13th and the 20th. Corn beef, cabbage, and pancakes. Don't forget to get your vegetables in during the week in between, okay? No public comments that we have. We did get some phone calls of folks interested again in our community choice aggregation. That's that bulk purchase we did for energy supply. I'm sure everybody's watching the news and seeing how the price of fossil fuels are escalating and electricity as well. Hudson Valley Community Power.com, that's Hudson Valley Community Power.com. More information, you can join at any time and exit at any time. Okay, so let's dive right on in to just some highlights of the finances for 2021 from the report, the annual report that we make to the controller's office. First of all, starting with fund balances, I think I skipped over rather quickly the other sheet, but you'll see on this slide what the fund balances are at the end of the year. They're solid and in many cases increasing despite the unusual nature of revenues and expenses during the pandemic. We've made additional investments into our capital reserve accounts, our capital accounts, making projects. And I'll briefly cover that. Once again, just standard impores rating or double A, which is amongst the highest ratings. Our debt as compared to what is allowed is miniscule and continues to go lower. These results that you'll see are in spite of the tax levy rate lower than 2015. We very proudly say this board and others that we've worked very hard never to raise taxes. You know, in the last six years, and I think you'll see from some of the highlights that we're also in good trajectory to continue that for at least a few years to come. Okay, all this while making community investments. Some of which you've no doubt seen. If you've been out and about in the community, new sidewalks, trails, you'll be seeing more of that next year or two. Farmland and other open space preservation. No doubt, folks have seen and hopefully have enjoyed the expansion and renovation of the recreational parks and playgrounds. Hopefully, we'll be talking about more work towards those ends in the next couple of months. Expansion and retrofitting town campus with clean energy and energy efficient upgrades. That's everything from insulation to solar install on the highway garage to changing out the lighting, to changing the heating and cooling equipment here at Town Hall. And no doubt, the community solar farm, which if you are a member, you're enjoying no doubt the savings as compared to what the utility is charging for similar services. We continue investing in our vehicles and equipment for the highway department. We're now 1.4 million dollars in total that we've made investment over the last six years. And that continues. We're also on a very good trajectory for investing in additional equipment for the highway department. There will be at the conclusion of 2022, no debt associated with the DP fund. All of this is possible with the support of our partners. Obviously, we like to not only acknowledge them, but also have the folks at home understand that not all of this is achievable without the support of grant funders. These are just some of the grant amounts that we've been able to achieve. Federal, state, and county grants, as you can see, it now totals approximately $3 million that we've received over the last several years. We've leveraged with taxpayer funds as well. Over the course of the last few years, we've refinanced the existing debt of the town and done so in a way that has netted savings to our bottom line. We've lowered our utility costs. Happy to report the completion of the street light purchase and conversion to LED, which should have substantial financial benefits. And obviously, all of our solar projects that we've done and the community choice aggregation program are saving us quite a bit of money with this, the enormous escalation energy supply. I mentioned the LED, so all of this has made it possible for us not to raise taxes, in fact, lower taxes over the last six years, and we're very proud of that. Here, I mentioned to you our fund balances. You can see in the general fund that we were able to increase that even when accounting for some set asides for projects that we'll be working on in 2022 and 2023. The same is true in the B fund. The only decrease we had was in the DB, and that's because we set aside a fair amount of money towards the equipment that's being purchased. But that still is a robust amount, 454. We'll be likely pulling more in 2022 to complete the purchase of that truck again, will be debt-free and in a very sustainable path for the highway equipment. Okay. Community preservation, as folks know, this is a fund that has been utilized over the years to protect lots of open spaces, leverage with both the county land trust and also to acquire recreational spaces. And that has accrued very nicely as the real estate market took off in the last year or two. And so it now exceeds $3 million. We've increased our fund balance in the fire line and also in the lighting. We'll be pulling a lot of the lighting out. We're in a position, we thought we would have to borrow for that project, but we have quite a bit of savings now that we've converted. And so there'll be a lot less borrowing associated with that capital project. The water reserve, they've had to tap into that, pun intended, to do some fixes. And so that now stands at $750,000. And one of the agenda items we have tonight is to set a public hearing on their annual increase that they proposed. So we have about $6 million set aside in the various fund accounts, $6.5 million, which has increased over $1 million from 2020 to 2021. Here again, just for those of you who are into the weeds with some of this. Part of the reason that we had, if you look to the left of the slide, we had good results is that we had higher than expected revenues, the A fund. So for the folks at home, the A fund is the general fund. That's a fund that services both residents in the town and in the village. And part of that financing comes not only from your property taxes, but from mortgage taxes. And because the real estate market was so strong, we saw greater than budgeted revenues come in there. And so we had an excess of over $300,000 there. Same thing is true in the B fund. We had greater than anticipated sales tax revenue. So in the A fund, it's mortgage tax, and then B funded sales tax. So unfortunately, with escalation in prices and tax associated with higher priced items, that is also translated into more sales tax revenue. That revenue is being distributed to us from the county. A small portion of that goes to each municipality. The formula for that, by the way, is being revisited for the next 10-year agreement between the county and the two cities. And we shall see what 2023 brings. We already know that 2022 will be a strong year for B revenues. Because we take in, under the old methodology, we take in that growth factor in the next few weeks. And we have a general idea of what that figure is going to be. So we expect B revenues and frankly, A revenues to be strong in 2022. That said, A revenues mortgage tax, we're starting to see some slowdown in mortgage activity. In fact, watching the news early this morning, noticed one of the mortgage lenders has laid off a fair amount of staff. So we'll have to watch that closely when we go to do budgeting for 2023. But for 2021, the results were better than expected on all revenues for the various funds. And then the same would be true of the DB. It doesn't have any independent revenue source besides the property taxes and what gets transferred into it from other funds as well.
Robert?
Yes, ma'am.
So the we just, so in Dutchess County, we just had a change to the sales tax on clothing and such, under $110. That that sales, there's no sales tax on that.
That's correct.
So when could we expect to see an impact from that, do you think?
You'll see the impact almost immediately from that, Christine. That'll be to the quarterly distributions that we receive. You won't see it in the growth factor because that actually relates to 2021 activity. So when, when we do our projection for the growth factor in 2022, another three, we'll start to see some impact. And remember, again, there's that census error, which is affecting our distribution right now. And until census corrects that, we won't have the full, you know, the full sales tax revenue coming to us until such time. But that said, I think we're, we've budgeted conservatively enough, and I think we'll be fine for 2022. Let's see how things shake out for 2023. The inflation, which is not a good thing, does however, boost sales tax revenue. Because items, whether it's the gasoline, whether it's vehicles, those items produce more sales tax. Makes sense?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if it was gonna make that much of a difference in the current budget numbers.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's huge.
It'll be sort of negligible in the current numbers, current year.
It'll be fairly negligible. The figure that was estimated by the county for what that impact would be. But it wasn't something that made us nervous. Let's put it that way. There is a new formula that's being discussed for the next 10 years. We don't know exactly what that will be, but it may get rid of the growth factor and may give us a set percentage. That's really an agreement between the county and the two cities. So when we have more information on that, we'll pass it along. Okay, on the expenditure side, so you can see that in all of our funds, we were able to manage expenses better than adopted with the slight exception of the highway DB fund, which, you know, for all intents and purposes, is right on budget. And there were some funds allocated towards some of those purchases. So good expense management in all three funds. And so what you see is a combination of increased revenue above expectations of 600,000. Expense management, 141,000, about $750,000 into the rainy day coffers, if you will. These figures don't include some of the transfers that I mentioned to the capital projects and to equipment as well. And here are some of the things, these are just where monies have been set aside in 2021 and will be fully expensed in 2022, streetlights. That'll be fully paid for with the exception of the small portion or smaller portion now that will be financed in 2022. That project is essentially complete. We still have money left over from a couple of years ago, set aside to pave the recycling yard. So once we commission some engineering to take a look at whether or not we need to put any additional drainage infrastructure around there, we could endeavor to do that. I should add that I've mentioned to Brandy that it may be time now, given we have to take a look at that salt shed, it may be time for us to develop a campus plan, including that additional acre that we bought for expansion several years ago. And to, you know, take a look and see what the needs are, not only today, but into the future. So working with our highway super and recycling and others. See if we can develop something to put forward for your consideration for a future, a future plan. Highway equipment, these are the amounts that have been set aside in 2021, again, for that new backhoe, half of the plow truck. Recreation, so there's money been set aside now to expand and rehabilitate the skate park proposal that the Recreation Commission put forth last year. So the money has now been set aside and campus as well, upgrade to town buildings, the generators and the like. That includes St. Marcus, by the way, that figure as well. And so that kind of is the highlights. The annual update is, document is on the town's website. You go to Anne Conway, the business manager, bookkeeper, web page, and there's a link right there, and you can see all the detail, your heart desires. But for the folks at home, just in some good news, fund balances are higher than last year. Still no need to, six years later, to raise taxes. And you know, when the time comes that we need to, we'll, we'll let you know. But I did want to cover one topic because I know that the assessor's been working with the state on assessment levels. And it should come to, no one's surprise, that property values went up dramatically over the last couple of years. And so therefore, assessment levels for residential properties in particular will be going up. And you know, from what the state has been telling all the municipalities around here, looking at high double digits in the teens. So basically somewhere between 17 and 19% assessment levels will go up. So we'll have to do, when we do budget again, we'll have to do what we did last year, which is decrease the tax rate commensurate with whatever percentage the assessor selects in order to keep the valuations at 100%. So for the folks at home, you'll see a sticker shock, if you will, your assessment levels were, are up. The good news is the values of your property as compared to the market, what the state is analyzing in the data have gone up substantially. And the other good news is your taxes won't, because we'll be lowering the tax rate accordingly. So that your bill for town taxes, anyway, we can't control the other taxing entities, should, should not change. Okay, any questions about highlights? Lots to read in the document itself. Especially if you have a hard time sleeping. Okay. Next item on the agenda is resolution number nine. It is to establish a date for the public hearing regarding water rates and charges for the water district. Just as a reminder to the folks at home, the water board came to us a few years ago and said we need to increase our rates, our rates are very low. We need to be able to put aside some money so that when we need to make a significant capital investment, either to paint the tank or to replace the tank or distribution lines, that we have money set aside so that there's not a substantial or dramatic increase in the costs associated with being a member of the water district. And they proposed for five years to increase it by 5%. Last year, because of the pandemic, we delayed the April increase of 5% to October. There was a six-month delay. And this year, I guess we, we could almost consider that again, given what's going on in in gasoline and heating fuel and electricity pricing for, for residents. So food for thought. We do need to have a public hearing on it, as we do each and every time. That would be at our next meeting, March 23rd. Let's pencil in 7:35, shall we? And again, this is for a 5% increase. And for the folks at home, what that means is if you don't have more than the minimum, you would have a quarterly bill of $49.48 instead of $47.12. So it's just a couple of dollars if you're in that category. And then any additional thousand is $5.73, going up to $6.02. So 7:35 on the 23rd, it's resolution number nine. And here's the public hearing notice, and there is the schedule of the various fees of the folks at home being proposed. One of the changes that Hank would like us to make, by the way, is to get rid of the commercial institutional additional amounts of the responsibility of the applicant. They don't believe that that will ever come into play because the district doesn't have that allowed zoning. So let's make that minor modification and then put it up for a public hearing. Is there a motion to approve resolution number nine?
So moved.
Thank you, Bill Hamel. He is on to the water board. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine Kane. All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Jacob Testa? Jacob Testa?
Hi.
And myself, I. Very good. Well, we only have one other business. And that is re or we had a letter of interest for the energy committee from Paul Fletcher Hill. And it's a little bit of his background. He's very involved in actually building his own heat pumps. I know Dennis Colley and other energy committee members have met with him. He's been participating in some of the meetings as well, and they would like to recommend him for appointment to the energy committee. We have two vacancies. They're two year appointments. So this would be for term ending in twenty twenty three. And it's Paul Fletcher. Hill. Would somebody like to make this motion?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Christine. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob Testa. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Bill Hamel?
Hi.
And myself. Congratulations, Paul. You'll be receiving a letter in the mail from Deanna. Okay, and we do have some other expressions of interest for committees that haven't yet been formed, so we'll tackle that hopefully at our next meeting. Does anybody have anything else tonight? This is one of the fastest meetings we've had. Don't get used to it. We've got a lot of stuff that'll be on our next agenda. Anyone? Okay, if not, I want to thank you all for joining us, the folks at home. Wish you a safe and healthy spring. Spring is almost upon us. Good night and thanks very much. Is there a motion to close?
So moved.
Thank you, Christine Kane. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill Hamel. All in favor, Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Julia Solomon, myself, night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.